Y'all are good. Nothing to talk about? Way two more minutes, so. Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, June 17th City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll. Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Baney?
Here.
Alderman Mahavik?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderwoman Miller?
Here.
Mayor Jett?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Pledge, ladies.
... The United States of America and your republic, which is the Kansas, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the promotion of Detective Brian Alto to the rank of Sergeant. Chief? Take your floor.
Let me begin by saying thank you to Mayor Jett and all the City Council for your support and witness to this promotional ceremony. Tonight, I have the privilege of promoting Officer Brian Alto to Sergeant. Brian, can you step up, please? I know you've been waiting for this for a while. On January 5th, 2001, Brian Alto took a big step in his life as he took his very first oath of office as a McHenry police officer. Although this may have been his first professional step, it certainly was not the only one. Over the course of the last eighteen and a half years, Brian has honed his skills and his abilities through hard work and determination. He has served as a field training officer, a range officer, an ILEAS Mobile Field Force officer, an evidence technician team member, a critical accident team investigator, a McHenry County Honor Guard, a school resource officer, and a detective. All of these assignments and extra responsibilities have helped prepare Brian for this next step. The men and the women who take this role are responsible for the day-to-day performance of the organization, and they ensure that our values are present in all that we do and our mission is met. I could not be more proud and honored to promote Brian Alto. Brian, I am confident that you will succeed in your new role, and I am excited to see what new and exciting things come of your career. Tonight, we have Police Commissioner Michael Roberts here to witness this promotion as well. Commissioner Roberts, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Chief. I've known Brian for most of his career. I got to know Brian when I was a Dean of Students at West Campus. Brian would come in, he was very articulate, very intelligent man. Couldn't pull the wool over his eyes. He shortly thereafter became a...the school resource officer. And what I found out very quickly about Brian was, if you want to get ahold of him, you better use your radio. Because if you walked down to his office, he wasn't sitting there. Brian was always all over the place. He's a guy who doesn't stand, or sit, or wait for action. I mean, he's a guy that goes out and seeks. And so Brian is highly intelligent. He's highly energetic. And I am absolutely thrilled to see him in a position as Sergeant, because I know that he'll set the example for all the other officers. Congratulations to Brian.
Thank you.
And would you like to introduce your family?
Thank you, sir, yes. My wife, Sarah. Without her, none of this would be possible, because I just...I can always count on her support at home, no matter what, all the crazy assignments and hours and things. My son, Jack, my daughter Natalie, my other daughter Rachel. My parents, Bill and Corinne Alto. My in-laws, Mark and Sue Better, came all the way from Stevens Point, Wisconsin for this. My Aunt Mary Ann Carroll. My Uncle John there. My other Uncle John back there, my Aunt Dagmar, all the way up from Tinley Park. They've witnessed this couple, long-term friends of mine, over twenty years, have known us since my freshman year of college, one came all the way from Chicago, the other one from Grayslake. And then other members of the McHenry County Honor Guard, Sergeant Lloyd Howman, Officer Andy Ritz, and Officer John Zakowski from the McHenry County Marine Unit as well, and then John Evans, and the other guys all know him. My brother Jeffrey, as well, sitting right here with his wife, Spring, and then here, just from Blakemore, that was close, but a lot of family, a lot of people...a lot of support, as the Chief alluded to, a lot of support in that I've had in my career, and I'm thankful for, and I look very forward to the next step. Thank you.
Okay, you won, Brian. You have the absolute most family and guests. Twenty years that I've been here, and you remembered all their names. Congratulations to that. Today, we're honored to have the Honorable Judge Robert Zalit with us this evening to administer Brian Alto's...Brian's oath.
Ready, Brian?
Sir.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Brian J. Alto.
I, Brian J. Alto.
Having been appointed to the position of Sergeant.
Having been appointed to the position of Sergeant.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinance of the City of McHenry.
And the ordinances of the City of McHenry.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of McHenry Police Sergeant according to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of McHenry Police Sergeant to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
She said she might stab you a little bit. Everybody listening in, man?
No, just I want to thank everybody, my call officers, the officers and folks I mentioned. Thank you very much for coming and witnessing this event. I really appreciate it, everybody making the trip, near and far. Really do appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, everybody that's here for Brian can stage this door here for a cake and coffee reception at the end of the hallway. Thank you so much for coming. No running!
All right, moving on to the next agenda item is...I call the first public hearing order to order at 7:07 PM for the presentation of fiscal year 2019-2020 appropriation ordinance in the amount of $48,726,399. At this time, I'm going to ask the public, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment at this time regarding this hearing? See none? I'm looking for a motion and a second to close the public hearing portion. Alderman Santee?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, second. Alderman Baney?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda is a motion to adopt a fiscal year 2019-2020 appropriation ordinance in the amount of $48,726,399. I am looking for a motion. Alderman Schaefer?
Make that motion.
Second. Alderman Santee?
I'll second the motion.
Questions or comments? Alderman Glad?
I just want to say, when you're looking at $48 million, and you think of, if I go way back to the lower thirties, mid-thirties, and I think of how it's grown over the years, and of course, appropriations is naturally from a lot of revenue that we gain, and I just want to state that we have a visitor here tonight for other reasons that helped bring that revenue into the city as he grew his auto industry or auto sales, and being one of the largest revenues in the city, I'd like to personally thank him here publicly, because we'd never be at that $48 million if we didn't have this speaker here either.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? See none? Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment on this side? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. I call the second public hearing to order at 7:09 PM on the City of McHenry's proposed ordinance authorizing the renewal and execution of a cable franchise agreement between the City of McHenry and Comcast. At this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment? Sir, please step onto the podium, state your name and address for public record.
Mike Dollar, 7511 Hickory Trail, Wonderland. I know I'm a little bit outside my home territory, but I am your guys' representative for the Internet Freedom from McHenry County. We're a nonprofit organization, totally volunteer. And what we're trying to do is get internet, fiber internet throughout the county that is owned by the county and the community. And I know this isn't directly related to what you're about to talk about, but it's an excellent thing, since internet's on your mind. So, I'd like to kind of reach out to the board and have...get your...get my information to you guys, get you back to me, so that we can talk about what the county...what the city here can do to help get that rolling throughout the county as an alternate option for internet, as well as it can also improve Comcast's connection, because the idea that we're going for is that even small startups and national organizations can have access to that fiber that we lay forth. We'll own the fiber, and then we can...we get revenue from those who use it to provide internet access to the rest of the county. That's the idea here. Fiber internet to the house can increase a home value by as much as a half a bath. And that's a big thing in this area to increase that value. It can also bring in a lot of great opportunities for businesses, for homes, work from home, better connection for the schools, which means better education. Access at everybody's home also means that the kids can do their homework, that they need to get access to, you know, information online from their home. Right now, there's a big deficiency in this county where high-speed internet isn't available to everybody. We want to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a card by chance?
I actually left my cards. I was in a hurry...I was in a hurry out the door, but I can...I can get my information to you, or I can swing by and drop them off. I think one of my compatriots had talked to you guys previously.
I'll get you my card, so that information works.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment at this time for this public hearing? Sure.
Is this the point where I can speak from Comcast?
Yeah. If you're being stepped up to the podium, state your name and address for public record, please.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Joan Sage. I do government affairs for Comcast. My address is 4450 Kishawaki Street in Rockford, Illinois. What you have before you is the cable agreement for cable loan. The FCC does regulate cable. It does not regulate the internet. So, what you're signing tonight would be for cable alone. Comcast does provide internet. We do have one gig of service to the home wherever our service is available. One thing that's important to remember, especially since the gentleman mentioned this, it's a good time to bring it up. You all have before you a brochure that talks about our Internet Essentials Program. This is where low-income families can receive our high-speed internet, which we normally... which retails for $50. They can get it for $9.95 a month, that includes their modem, which usually is $10 for a month. And if they need an installation, which normally is $60, there's no charge for that. This is available to all low-income families who have children in school. It is also available to anyone who is in housing authority properties or Section E properties. It's available to any student at McHenry Company College that is on a Pell Grant and is a full-time student, and we've also expanded it now to include any veterans who are on assistance. So, that is separate from the cable agreement, but that is something that we do offer. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the public that would like to make a public comment? See none? I'm looking for a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Alderman Santee?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, second. Alderman Miller?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda is a motion to adopt a proposed ordinance authorizing the renewal and execution of a cable franchise agreement between the City of McHenry and Comcast. At this time, I'm looking for a motion and a second. Alderman Schaefer?
Make that motion.
Thank you, second.
I'll second.
Alderman Miller? Discussion? Comments? See none? Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment at this time on this side? See none? That is the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Baney?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda, I'm going to ask any member of the public wishing to address the Council, they'd be invited to do so at this time. Before I close the public comment portion, I'll be allowing Joe and Kim Doherty from Fast Steadies to make an informal presentation for gaming prior to addressing a related ordinance in upcoming agenda items here. I will ask that we treat this item as a discussion for the sole purpose of giving direction tonight prior to moving forward with item 11E. So, Kim, Joe, if you'd like to go ahead and start that, that would be...
Okay, thank you for your time for considering the request. I know last time I was in, there was quite a few questions about, you know, is the gaming tied to, you know, as far as different items, like tied to food, or tied to whatever type of things I talked about when I was with the Aldermen. You know, they came up with all different type of questions. So, I kind of brought our expert in. And she does specialize in gaming. So, I could go through my whole list that I put in front of you, but if I could maybe have her do this for a better time.
Please state your name and address for public record, please.
Sure. Hi, Donna Moore, 353 North Clark Street, Chicago, Illinois, 606-54. I thought the whole crowd was here for this tonight, so I was a little disappointed when they all got up and left. You know, you drive 40 miles or so, you thought maybe everybody wanted to hear about this. But anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Again, my name is Donna Moore. By way of background, I am a former state federal prosecutor, and I was also the first general counsel to the Illinois Gaming Board. That makes me sound a little old, but Tom trusts me. And my team and I wrote the regulations that govern the state's riverboat casinos, and then that were also used for the model to govern video gaming in this state. So, I have about 25 years of experience representing gaming clients from publicly traded corporations to sole proprietors who are offering video gaming in their establishments. So, I'm here tonight, as Joe told you, and Kim, I represent them. And for those of you that don't know them, which I'm not sure anybody here doesn't, but you know, these are lifelong McHenry residents, and they've owned and operated Fast Steadies for about 20 years. And the Dohertys want to expand their business by offering services that would give customers the chance to play some video gaming terminals, have a glass of wine if they choose while they wait for their car to be washed. And as you know, the Illinois Gaming Board requires that you have a liquor license, state and local liquor license, prior to them giving you a video gaming establishment license. So, you know, my statements on their behalf are really to talk a little bit about the intent of the state's gaming laws, because they were passed in the belief that compliant, well-regulated, legal gambling is actually better for a community than illegal gambling. And in a lot of communities, you have sweepstakes games coming in, and you don't get tax revenue from that. So, communities have been pleased to welcome video gaming, because it is a way for the communities to actually regulate this, along with the Gaming Board, get tax revenue, and not have illegal gaming going on, which seems to happen in communities that don't have legal video gaming. And I know you have some here. But the Dohertys are really model candidates under the gaming laws. You know them. They're local. They raise their kids here. They run a compliant, tax-paying business. They give back to their community. Their business decisions are made by them, not made by some company or corporation who doesn't live here. And they really have McHenry's best interests at heart, and as I said, not somebody who doesn't have a tie to your community. So, when you get right down to it, what they're asking to do is a chance to grow their business and make a better life for their own family, as well as contribute and contribute tax dollars to the City of McHenry. And so, I know there's a concern about opening floodgates. And this is a matter where, you know, the City Council, and I've read some of the ordinances and some of what's in the proposed ordinances, you have the discretion, obviously, to, on a case-by-case basis, decide what business gets a liquor license and what business doesn't get a liquor license. In the case of the Dohertys, there's no hidden agenda here. It's pretty transparent, no absentee management. But I think that to worry, and it is a concern, that all of a sudden, you know, will floodgates open, I think that goes back to your discretion and how you choose to exercise it. And you may look at the character of the folks who are applying the ties to the community, the kind of establishment they want to open. From a recent news article, it looked like many in your community favored having video gaming as part of what can be offered in your community. So, I'm here tonight both to advocate on behalf of the Dohertys, but to also answer any questions that you may have. I took the liberty of looking over the proposed ordinances that are on your agenda tonight. And because we had a new gaming expansion bill that just passed, and the governor is rumored to be signing it before the end of the month, there are some things in the expansion bill that I think will change some of what's in your draft ordinances, so you may want to consider tabling them or amending them, so they match the new expansion bill. So, for instance, just by way of example, the statute now goes up to six games per establishment, and in certain kinds of truck stops that qualify 10 games. What we found is sometimes it's just easier to put the maximum number of games allowed by law, and that way, when the legislature deems it appropriate to change numbers, that way, your ordinance still stands. And I also read about the definition of a full bar, and, you know, I'm happy to discuss, but I think the definition of a full bar may affect some of your cafes that are in operation right now, because I'm not sure that that definition sits on all fours with what a cafe business actually is. So, I'm happy to discuss, I'm happy to answer questions, and I would respectfully ask that maybe you give some more consideration to some of the ordinances that you're contemplating this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any questions by Council regarding this presentation at all? Any questions for the Dohertys? All right. At this time, go ahead and...is there anything either of you want to say before I...
No, I think I gave it to you all in the bullets. I kind of trimmed it down as much as I could, so it'll get to like the...
So, at this time, I ask for straw poll. Are you wanting to discuss this further, or are you wanting to move on with the rest of the agenda and pass the ordinances later on in the agenda? Any comments? Alderman Glad?
I just think the discussion probably be when we get to those lines that we're talking about ordinances.
Sure. Any others? Yeah? All right. We'll wait until the agenda comes up, the agenda item comes up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment? Sure, come on up. No, that's fine. Is it on anything on the agenda, or is it...
Yes, yes.
What?
Assigned for the agenda.
What's your name?
My name is Noreen Floden. I live with my son at 2038 Kennedy Drive.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me address you tonight. In May of 2018, my husband and I returned back to McHenry after 17 years being retired in Florida, because of an unfortunate loss of money due to an unscrupulous money manager. My son offered us to come and live with him at the time until we can get back on our feet. In August, we met with Brian Koonat and explained to him our need for an FHA mortgage. He said it was fine, that the house would be built in five months, and we signed the contract. Our closing date was February 28th. It was changed to March 29th, obviously, because it was not finished. Since it was not approved in five months, we had to reapply for our FHA loan. Our next closing date was April 25th. We got the okay from the bank, we got the okay from Koonat, and it still did not happen, because the government required the building to be completely finished, even the driveway was not done and landscaping. So, our next closing was May 24th at 2:00. It was called off at noon. Because the FHA said they wanted to see the variance, because Koonat built the building several feet over the building line, so they wanted to see the variance. Koonat did not have a variance. The City of McHenry did not have a variance. Now, we're stuck in the middle. Our home has been finished for several months. Our things are packed in my son's garage, we're living out of a suitcase. We boarded all our appliances and have pushed them back four times already. They're coming by August 1st, if we get the home. They're coming by August first if we get the home. Now we're told that we have to wait longer because Kounat has to submit all the properties that need a variance. It was the city of McHenry's mistake that they gave them the building permit in the first place. It was the city of McHenry's mistake that they gave them a certificate of occupancy. So I'm asking you now to forego all the formalities and the formats and make don't make us wait any further. We were waiting so long. We need to rectify this immediately and make it possible for us to move into our home that is waiting for us with the variance immediately. I'm seventy-eight years old. My husband is eighty-five years old. It's ten months now since we signed our contract. If we wait any more, then we have to go in and reapply again for the FHA loan. We need this home now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Ross, could you have anything you'd like to say or in regards to this?
No, I can't. It has to go through a process.
It didn't go through a process to get the variance and to get the permit.
This is very convoluted and it would be hard for me to explain right now how it got to this point. I mean, I could if you want to listen.
I would like to be done right away. We are living out of a suitcase and we can't wait extra months or we've got to reapply all over again.
I understand.
Talking about?
Yeah.
You know, this is probably something to drop through somewhere. Let's forget about how it happened. What can we do to rectify it as quickly as possible? Is there any way to get a special explaining and somebody meeting? I know there's a certain timeframe that we have to do, but we get that thing rolling tomorrow morning and get that on a docket, even if it's a special night or whatever we need to do and get it back to council. And it's, I mean, again, it's a very unusual circumstance. In twenty-two years I've been up here, I've never seen it, you know, to this type of situation. Let's just rectify it as fast as we can.
Yeah, we had this discussion at the last council meeting too, so I know. Ross, where is the process now?
There's a fifteen-day notice that has to go out for planning zoning meeting. And then obviously, it has to come to council. So right now, I'm waiting on information through the variance process to get the notice out. Once that happens, then it's just a matter of... The next planning zoning meeting is scheduled for July 17th. And then the next council meeting is...
Well, like I say, couldn't we have a special planning and zoning meeting? You know, let's step it up, you know. There's no reason why we couldn't possibly get something together in sixteen, seventeen days, whatever. You know, and if Kounat isn't ready for the rest of them, so be it. Let's just get this one taken care of so we can move on forward for the future. That's my opinion.
That's what we're trying to do right now. That's what we're trying to do right now.
All right.
Does the city council agree with that?
That's what we, I thought that's what we discussed that on June 3rd. We said, "Go ahead and get it on the next one."
Yeah, but we're waiting still on information.
So we missed June's planning and zoning meeting, correct?
Right, I found out about this, the last day that the notice could have gone out for the June meeting. So there was no way we could have gotten it.
We couldn't, we couldn't have gotten it June meeting.
And we had to evaluate the entire subdivision.
So can we just do the one lot?
We could, but I have all the information. So I just actually talked to Doug today about getting notices out. But it's a matter of getting the commission together for a special meeting. So the first week we could do it would be the July 4th week. So if all the commissioners are available during July 4th, we could do it. It would be the week after that if not. And then, you know, then we'd have to look at a July's council meeting.
All the council members agree with that? That's okay, yeah.
That's what our intent is right now, sir.
And does that meet the FHA next deadline, whatever the issue is talking about?
I, I'm not sure when.
When's your deadline for the FHA loan?
To go through the process again.
They said if we're not, we're not in the first five months, we got to do it again. We are now ten months on the twentieth of this month, oh, twentieth, yeah, of, let me see. Of July. If we're not in by the twentieth of July, then we could reapply on the whole.
So it's July 20th.
I, yeah, I will check with my bank to make sure. I hope it's not before then. But it's usually like five months. But he told us last week, when I talked to the bank, they said, "You better get in there soon because FHA doesn't fool around. They're going to want you to reapply again." And it's just lots of paperwork. And you know, it's just, your emotions go up and down, up and down, up and down because you think you're going to get in and then you don't get in. And it's just extremely... I just wish we could just do my lot. Let Kounat do all the rest of the lots. Because he's the one that made the mistake. He should have known better. I would think seasoned professionals should have known. He shouldn't have built up with a lot. But he should have got a variance. But since he didn't, the city of McHenry should have known that he didn't have a variance and not given the building permit. It's not any of our fault. And we're sitting right in the middle of this whole mess. So please, please let it happen soon.
So let's?
July 15th.
July 15th.
Council meeting.
We'll bring it back to July 15th.
Thank you so much.
All right. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a public comment at this time? See none? Moving on to the consent agenda, items 10A through 10L. Is there any council members wanting to pull any items for separate consideration? No? I'm looking for a motion for items 10A through 10L. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderwoman Bany?
Second.
Discussion on these items? Alderman, Santi?
Just on 10A, congratulations to Troy Strange. Congratulations to Troy and then also to Tricia. Congratulations. And then one more to, I don't believe Mike's here. Put Mike's appointment to the vice chairman of economic development commission. Congratulations to Mike. So ahead.
Thank you. Alderman, go ahead.
I just want to state on D, not that we need to pull it or anything else, just that Riverside Chocolate Factory and I brought it up many years ago that I wanted to see this happen. And I'm just finally glad it finally come into fruition because I think it's a building that I can remember as a little kid coming into West Shore Beach back in the 50s. And that was back, it was set further back before 120 expanded and everything else. It's just been in my memory ever since. So it's that old of a building. And it's kind of a, what I can recall is when you came to McHenry coming from the west, from the east and west, you knew you were coming into McHenry when you saw that steeple up there. Glad to see it happen.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? I'm looking for Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Mehavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Congratulations, Tricia. We look forward to having you in the studio. And I want to thank everyone that actually applied for that position. There were several of them that had a ton of energy and excitement about being on it. It's exciting to see what else they can get signed up for for the city of McHenry. But it's going to be nice to have you sitting over here, so thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Would you like to say anything?
I'm very excited. I'm looking forward to it. I'll give you guys my best. I work for Gary Lang during the day, so I have to give him my best as well. But thank you very much for the opportunity. I look forward to it. I do have a background in communications, PR. So I hope to be a really good note taker. I have a really good leader over there, Matthew, who's going to teach him everything he knows. So I look forward to working with you guys. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Troy, congratulations. Troy has worked hard over the last part of the year, right? Oh, I mean more than that, but for the last year. I didn't mean that. But I want to recognize his wife that's here for putting up with all the late hours and everything else for the last year or so. And if you want to introduce your wife so anyone knows.
Yeah, that's my wife, Melinda. I've been married ten, going on eleven years, and she's pregnant with our fourth. Like you said, she's a, I couldn't be the professional I am without her managing the affairs.
Yeah, so thank you very much. And Troy, once again, congratulations. Any other council or staff want to say anything to Troy or Tricia? Alderman, go ahead.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any others?
Welcome aboard. Thank you very much, Gary. Thank you for sharing. We know that you share often and we appreciate that. And of course, Troy, you've always done a great job. We expect nothing but your best. Thank you and congratulations.
Awesome. Thank you again. Next item on the agenda is 11A. We're going to be pulling this item off the agenda tonight. Derek, would you like to kind of fill in?
David, David can back me up too if he wants to. We just identified a couple of issues, outstanding issues that we need to address with these, with the organizations that have submitted the application. Even though they've gone through the conditional use process of planning and zoning, we had a couple of questions come up that we want to address with them before we move forward with the approval and the consideration at the council level. Not as much about the raffle as about the conditional use part of it. So we'll follow up on that.
Actually, it's a reverse. Not so much about the zoning, but it's about the raffle issue. We have to make sure they qualify for getting a raffle license. So follow up.
Thank you. Next item is item 11B. Is discussion to adopt an ordinance amending section 26-24 of the McHenry Municipal Code, waterworks user rates. Carolyn, can you please present this item?
Thank you. Council is being asked to consider the attached ordinance adjusting water rates to levels that are appropriate to fund existing operating and maintenance to the water system. And just as a reminder, we are now adjusting rates with the budget instead of in February like we used to.
Thank you. Any discussion by council on this item? Anyone from the public like to make a public comment on this item? See none at this time?
I just had one.
Chair, Alderman, go ahead.
I'm sure this is going to probably in the paper or whatever that, you know, we're raising the rates and everything else. I hope they don't put it as, you know, that the percentage is going up where everybody looks at the percentage of the water bill and that this is just for the user rate and not debt service and everything else. So there is no change in that part of the report. Just so that's clarified.
Thank you. All right. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion, a motion and second for item 11B is presented. Alderman Miller?
I'll make that motion and we approve item 10, 10A, 10B, excuse me, regarding the municipal code on waterworks user rates.
Okay, and that's 11B.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right. Second, Alderman Mehavik?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Mehavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 11C. Discussion to adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 1920 budget, account 100 dot 22 dot 8300, and the amount of $22,621 and authorization to purchase one 2019 Ford Interceptor, sorry, Gary Lang, utility from bus Ford not to exceed $32,165, purchase and install emergency vehicle equipment for Ultra Strobe Incorporated not to exceed $8,342.25. Chief Burke, please present this item.
Thank you, mayor. On May 28th, 2019, the McHenry Police Department had a marked patrol vehicle that was damaged beyond repair after being involved in a motor vehicle accident. With such, staff has worked to find a replacement for this vehicle as this patrol vehicle is a vital piece of equipment needed to provide our services. Staff is requesting city council authorization for a budget amendment and authorization to purchase, for the purchase of a replacement police vehicle and equipment as presented. And I'm available to answer any questions that staff or council may have.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Alderman, go ahead.
Yeah, question, but just a comment. It's the fact that, you know, over the years, it seems like we have more and more of these accidents. Not taking away one bit from our officers. It just shows that the area is growing more and more traffic and the way people drive everywhere has changed. And it's just something that we need to be aware of as we go forward to different stages of planning transportation throughout the city. So.
Thank you. Alderman Santi?
Yeah, my question is, we've got seventeen, almost eighteen thousand that we're receiving through insurance. And we have to pick up the rest of this price with a budget amendment of 22,000. Where, are we allowed to go after that 22,000? And how do we go about doing that?
So I'm going to let the city administrator answer the insurance side of it so the police doesn't get involved with the insurance side. If there was criminal charges, we would seek restitution through the criminal proceeding. But the civil side with the actual insurance companies.
Yeah, I talked to Ann Campenella, handles all of our insurance. And Carolyn, you can back me up here too if I need additional information. But we do, we subrogate or go after, if you want to use that term, as much of the insurance claim as we can get if there's another party as part of the accident. Those claims are handled through a separate company, CCMSI, that does that on our behalf. And it doesn't always happen. It obviously depends on how much, if any, insurance the other party has. Or again, if there's criminal charges, it has to get through that process also. We do get some of that money in, but it's never the difference. I don't think it's ever been the difference of the insurance claim and what the actual cost of a replacement vehicle is.
Probably don't have a timetable, but any idea normally what the procedure is on something like this, three months, six months or anything?
No, I asked that question of Ann too and she couldn't give me a timeframe at all. It's, it goes through quite a long process. And when you have insurance companies talking to insurance companies and what, how responsive they are and whether they're responsive or not. And so that's just kind of the path it takes. If I find out, I can let council know.
Thank you very much. Alderman Schaefer?
Chief, in this case, this vehicle was one of the older sedans, correct? I mean, not that that's a good thing, but wasn't it? Or no?
No, this is what we recall.
Oh, this was one of the?
This is a middle-aged sedan. It had approximately the low 40,000-ish miles. It was two, still over two years old. So no. Officer Grands normally drives an older car with well over 100,000 miles on it. It surprised me to tell you that it was actually down for service because it's got larger miles on it. And it was getting brakes and new tires and some front-end work. And so she was driving a different car the day of the accident, which was the newer car.
And I think I asked this last time too, but we're, this is a new SUV then, and that's what the Ford has available. They don't have a...
Yeah, there is no more sedan being sold by Ford at this point. It's just that it's the utility. They call it the police interceptor utility. It's on the same chassis, the body frame as a Ford Explorer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by council? Is there any comments by the public regarding this item? See none? This time, I'm looking for a motion for item 11D as presented. Alderman Bany?
I'll make that motion.
No, I'm still at 11C, yes.
11C, my bad. Sorry, 11C.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you make that motion tonight. Seconded by Alderman Santi?
I will second the motion.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderwoman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mehavik? Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is discussion to adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 1920 budget, account 100 dot 01 dot 5110, and the amount of $22,000 in acceptance of a bid from McHenry Heating and Escavating Incorporated in the amount of $22,000 for the demolition of public buildings at Newman Park and Court Street.
Derek, do you want to present this?
Sure, yeah, so the summary is that demolition of these facilities has been discussed by council as part of the parking improvements in the downtown area and there was actually, it's 2017 is when that discussion took place, in November I think in 2017 and for a couple of reasons. First of all, to open up line of sight as it relates to the Newman Park buildings, to open up the line of sight between Green Street and Court, the Court Street parking lots because visitors coming into the community, although many of us may know where that parking is available, there's no line of sight there and it would open it up more, not only for that, but to open up the walking way between Court Street parking lots and Green Street. People would go up and down Green Street, but they may or may not know that there's parking back there to access and for the businesses on Green Street. The Court Street building was also discussed as the potential is a tear down to be able to redo that as a parking lot. There's parking spaces there now, but what obviously the use of that building is limited at this point. We actually just went through it, council may remember, last winter, went through the process of property disposition for all the, it had basically been a gathering point for old furniture and desks and stuff that we had and so that's all cleared out of there now and really it's the opportunities there to be able to take that down and again to improve it at some point in the near future for parking. And this was not, it was included as a project in the CIP, but not for the budget process this year, not as part of the budget this year, with all the activity in the downtown and now the demolition of the former funeral home and McHenry Savings Bank property, we just thought it was a good time to take these buildings down too to have the opportunity to make the improvements on those sites also.
Thank you, Derek. Any questions or comments regarding this item? Alderman Santi?
I like that we're moving forward on this. My one concern is, and I'm not sure if it came because of other commissions that looked into this prior, why, why were we unable to put it into the budget to have this money already set there?
Just the oversight, just honestly, yeah, I mean, the project is in the budget as a downtown parking.
Exactly. I know the parking was.
But it wasn't in there as a budgeted item for the year?
Yeah, I, budget amendments, they're in, I, you know, sometimes it's just a, it's tough to swallow it this way, but what we're doing here is moving forward with some other spaces and we've had numerous discussions about that Court Street garage and being able to put some more spaces out there. So, all in all, it's, I would like to avoid as much as possible budget amendments, but I'm willing to accept this and move forward and get this done. Oh, I'm sorry, one more question. Is there any historical significance in those buildings?
No, so that's something I was going to say, what you asked. These were both reviewed and approved or tear down by the Landmark Commission and the request by the Landmark Commission relative to, at least at the time, I can ask them again since I'm the liaison of that commission now, is requested the time that they approved the tear down was an opportunity to go through the Newman Park buildings, just to take pictures of the insides, take pictures of the facilities. So, I will reach out to them tomorrow again and make sure that that opportunity is provided that I'm before we move forward to tear down those buildings, but no, nothing that would, nothing that would prohibit them, the Landmark Commission, from approving a tear down of the facilities.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Glad?
Yeah, by tearing these down, you know, we're not really looking at too much additional parking over there as much as just the openness.
Right, that's correct.
I just wanted to clarify.
Our Newman Park, you're saying?
Right, and we will come up with some new designs for Newman Park that...
Yes.
You know, I wish we'd look at the, there's an area off of, I think it's Second Street over in St. Charles, behind the buildings on North Avenue, where they have no parking on North Avenue and so therefore, well, actually it's Main Street 64 over there, but you know, they've got a nice water feature and everything else over there. It's the type of thing I've always visioned over there if we tore those buildings down, just would complement the whole area.
I have to, actually I have to go to St. Charles for a meeting this week, so I'll make sure to stop in and take some pictures.
Yeah, it's right behind, I can't remember the bar right up at Nellies, I think. Like I said, it's right after St.
Does it mean to go to Nellies?
Do they serve lunch there? Actually, actually you have that court and then you go to their city garage area.
Oh, all right.
I don't know where it's at.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
We do pick up parking here. A couple. No, on the Court Street building. That's getting torn down.
Right, but I mean as far as the area where we tear it down, the...
Well, they're included in this, the Court Street building too.
Right.
Any other questions?
Question.
Question. Any comments, concerns by the public? See none? I'm going to ask for a motion for item 11D as presented. Alderman Santi?
I will make the motion for the budget amendment authorization to accept the bid for the demolition of public buildings at Newman Park and Court Street as presented.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Glad?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is discussion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter four, alcoholic liquor, allow a detailed definition of full bar and the addition of a personal care establishment license. Discussion on this item by the council? See none? Open up for the public, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment at this time? See none? This time I'm looking for a motion and a second for item 11E as presented. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second.
Discussion? Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, this is our first attempt at some of these ordinances that we're looking at right now and that, you know, they can always be tweaked and we always open for comments from outside as far as ways to approve our ordinances, but I think these are the type of ordinances that we've been hoping for for quite a while and I'm glad to see them coming to fruition.
Alderman Santi?
I just want to thank Chief Burke, our attorney, David McCarthy, and the mayor and our city administrator, Morfield, for the time they devoted, especially over the last two to three weeks and actually, you know, discussing it on an individual basis with the council. We got some insight, we did have some numerous discussions and found a, you know, found some groundwork to be able to put this together and hopefully tonight's move this through. So ahead.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
I just want to thank everybody that was open to some new ideas, open to discussion. Again, thank you, Mr. Burke and Mr. McCarthy for your background and your homework and I think this moves us forward to a place that we can revisit Mr. McCarthy's comment that a liquor license isn't a right, it's a privilege and we, the council, have the ability to evaluate each application and this gives us more guidance and more substance to do that and more opportunities as they're presented, as they're requested. So, I just want to thank everybody involved and I think it's really a big step forward.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Alderman Bany?
Could I just ask you to clarify how if this passes, it might affect the Doordies and that conversation?
Derek?
Or Derek?
Well, the Doordies need a liquor license one way or the other in order to do what they want to do, so I'm not sure this particular license affects them or the next one, but to the extent it does, we would accommodate that if you were to give them a liquor license. The real issue for them is, do you plan on issuing a liquor license? And that's why they made their pitch, right, because you need a liquor license.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's a fundamental decision that needs to be made because that's what their informal request is, they're not here on an agenda item, but as you know, they've made that request and that was the direction we're looking for. If you're looking to issue them a liquor license, then we would take that into consideration with all our ordinances just to make sure it works. But right now, that's not the case. So, if that is your direction as the majority, we would, we would go back and make that work. Right now, we don't have any direction.
So, if, because I feel like I'm so confused, so if we were to approve this, they're not going to fit or they could still come back to council and make that request?
No, they still need a liquor license.
Right.
They're not on the agenda. This has nothing to do with them.
Okay.
But my guess is if you did issue them a liquor license, we would take a closer look at this and probably adjust it.
Which is within our right.
It is.
Any other questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is discussion to adopt an ordinance amending chapter nine, devices coin-operated, section nine through 10, video gaming terminals of the city of McHenry's municipal code. Chief, do you want to present this item?
Thank you, mayor. The purpose of this agenda item is for the consideration of council's approval of the rewrite of chapter nine, section nine dash 10, video gaming terminals. This rewrite includes key changes in council authority to issue licenses, fees, definitions and written agreements in regards to terms, including signage and partitions. Attached to this agenda, council will find a complete proposed revision of the new ordinance for potential approval. Staff is present to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, chief. Any comments, questions regarding this item? Is there any questions or comments from the public?
Thank you. Again, as I commented earlier there, because of the expansion legislation that was just passed, I think that the numbers in here don't match what the numbers are now in the expansion, which is six video gaming terminals.
That wasn't the desire of the city council.
Okay, and so then that would be my comment, I suppose, in terms of the liquor licensing. I guess I would just agree to disagree. We've litigated whether or not a liquor license is a property right in Cook County and we've been successful on that case for six or seven times. So, once you do get a liquor license, it is a property right where due process rights attach and you can't summarily take it away. And in addition, I, as I mentioned before, I think that under the new definition, the Doordies, you know, if desired, would comply, but I think it is open to interpretation by you all as to the various points that you want to put in terms of whether to grant a liquor license to someone that could also then have VGTs. And what some municipalities have done is also create another category of liquor license where it's just beer and wine as opposed to a full bar, so that may be something you talked about or not, but in that way, the cafes qualify as opposed to offering a full bar. So, thank you.
Going back to council, I'm looking for a motion and a second on item 11 as presented. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Santi?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion by council? See none? Clerk, please call the roll. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bany?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda, we're going to switch gears here and go to staff reports and then mayor's city council comments and then for executive session, we'll have everyone remove themselves from the council chambers. Staff reports this evening? See none? I have nothing for my comments. City council comments? Alderman Bany?
I just kind of had a question and I, hopefully we can put this on the agenda when we do our strategic planning, but this extra launch was a ball and it was really exciting and but I did have a question when I was there. I know there was a bike loop approved previously to kind of give us the opportunity for people to have a place to ride those. Is that something that is still being worked on and I know part of that is that we probably need a city planner and so I was kind of questioning those two things which I know are tied together, if that's something that can come up in strategic planning or if there's work being done on that currently?
Yeah, why don't you bring it up as part of the, because Bill knows, has some insight, he's not here tonight, he has some insight on it too, so let's talk about it.
But it is something that we need to hear.
Yeah, okay.